Sure, uh, that's kind of slippery slope. Can't tell cheap police out of the job.
Sure.
Um, I don't know, I'm sure there's other truck drivers within the city limits after a bike is lost.
Okay, so as, so as is. So Mr. Hood has made a motion to leave the ordinance as is. Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Ramirez has a second. All in favor? Oppose?
Just thinking, just thinking. I need those.
You're, you oppose?
No, I said I was just thinking.
Okay.
Maybe you could probably put up, because I know people used to put up all their H G M, but I don't know. That's probably not. I've seen trucks there before. But I don't know people who still consider that.
They stopped it?
People that don't.
So we.
They used to and they stopped it.
So we have the, so we have the motion, we have a second. We have. Favor of keeping the ordinance as it is. So, uh, we have three with one opposed.
So I can't come down, I can't turn off the highway and come down a huge street either?
No, sir. Okay. Now we will deliberate and act on an open-ended waiver allowing the city's electrical inspector to perform electrical work within the city limits?
Uh, council, this is, we do have current ordinance in section eight point nine for building ordinances that state are designated. Electrical inspector cannot perform work in the city of Dangerfield with their, as an electrician unless council grants a waiver allowing that. Uh, it's a conflict for him to do the work and then inspect his own works. The solution to that is to allow you, is to ask you to grant an open-ended waiver and then I will appoint an alternate licensed electrical inspector to inspect his work. So that there is no conflict. The, I have spoken with another inspector, he's willing to come over and hit up Mr. Brown's work if you grant and allow that to happen. This is, it has been done a long time ago where we had an inspector that did work in the city and waiver was needed so he could do that so that there's no conflict. That is what I'm asking of you and the waiver is on page fifty-nine which details about that the inspector shall not conduct any inspections of their own work. An alternate licensed electrical inspector independent from the primary inspector will be assigned by city manager or doesn't need to conduct all inspections of such work. And the city council may rescind or modify this waiver at any time. It's just to keep any conflict from occurring.
The waivers is kind of a, basically a check and balances to make sure.
Yes, sir, it's just to keep it above board. We shouldn't have our electrical inspector inspecting his own work. And that's this way that we have a secondary inspector inspect his work.
He is, sir.
Nathan Brown is our current electrical inspector, he owns Brown's electric.
And who would the person be that you would now inspecting his work?
When?
I said who?
Who, oh, well, I've spoken with, um, Hollywood. I'm trying to think of his real name. Sorry. Hollywood does work and I spoke with him and then the inspector of East Springs will also get back to him. So I, I have options. To get somebody else to come over and inspect.
Your talk is not good.
Comfort.
Thank you. What is actually?
I've never really called him a team but Hollywood.
Yeah, boy, she's the one you've been looking for.
He's done electrical inspections for us here in the city before. He filled, he used to fill in for Joe Bush when Joe Bush would be on vacation, so yes, he's been there.
I'm gonna make a motion, allowing the city's electrical inspector to perform electrical work within the city limits? And that's enough.
Okay. Mr. Ramirez has made a motion, we have a second? Mrs. Smith, a second. All in favor? None opposed? Now we're going to deliberate and act on a request of the approval of the oversized, uh, freestanding sign located in Capstone Healthcare. Uh, five oh seven East Williams, is it William?
Watson move?
Watson move.
It's a nursing home.
Oh, nursing.
It's called Capstone now. They're putting up a new sign, the square footage of the sign is slightly oversized what the ordinance calls for. Ornis calls for thirty square foot. Uh, their sign is forty-eight point five, I believe.
Still a lot, it's not.
It's not a lot. It's, uh, forty-eight point seven. Not a lot.
Is our reason over, is that the same size?
Is it a reason?
Yeah.
I can date why the sign is that size. It is not, it's not over height. Uh, it's just gonna be in the square footage. The height of the sign is six point five feet. Uh, our top out at a freestanding is point four feet, so it's older than that, it's just a square footage.
It's up off the road where that, where the present sign is?
It's actually detailed, it's got, they're moving it down from where, it sits currently in front of the nursing home and they're confident on the edge down there. You can see on page sixty-three, they've got a, you know, little crown.
So where they want to locate, won't be driving traffic?
I don't know. But this is just for art awareness, they still have to do their own.
Right now it's just kind of like a makeshift, but.
They have a, a banner over, is that one?
Yeah.
Hiding it?
I make a motion to approve the oversized, please authorize.
Okay, Mr. Ramirez has made a motion. We have a second?
A second.
Mr. Hood? Mr. Hood has seconded. Would we, all in favor? None opposed? Okay. Now we will review, discuss, and possibly appoint Northeast Texas Municipal Water District Director to represent the city of Dangerfield.
I have received applications that have been opened for the last month since we had the last meeting. I did post it on social media and the website, I pushed it out. Uh, it did get some shares, we did receive one application, Mr. Rocky Thompson. So you're familiar with him, his letter of interest is on page sixty-four, I did withhold, I have his application. I can share with you, uh, it does have personal information, so I did not put it in the packet. And he has expressed an interest, I do believe, um, Mr. Womack spoke earlier, he is correct that count that the board meets at a later portion of the month. So, um, just for your information that he would be appointed, if you appoint Mr. Rocky Thompson, it would be starting June first. Is when he would take over, it's the end of Stan Wyatt's term. Not May third first, June. I do have his application, most of you are familiar with him.
So, just, sorry. I was just gonna say, so he posted a job for like, for over a month, you know, and one person showed interest in it.
Yes.
And Mr. Womack was representing someone that did not apply for.
I, I have not spoken with Laura May, I don't know if she's got any interest in serving, she did not apply. Um, I don't know if she just didn't hear it, some people don't do social media, um, I did try to push it out on social media, website.
What about the paper?
Didn't publish it in the paper. If you choose to not appoint at tonight's meeting, I will post it in the paper, I will publish it again on the website and on the social media. Uh, but if, if you don't, then I will go to those extra steps and try to get it out even more.
Okay. So it's not urgent to fill up the session tonight, is that correct?
Right, I mean, you can if you so choose, but if you do not, then we still have time at the next meeting to appoint before their next meeting in June where the next appointed director will take over. There won't be a gap.
If you could feasibly go in an extra thirty days just to kind of?
You could, yes. If you want to fill out more time.
Transparency, said.
You can. I know this is a hot button for a lot of places, um, so if that's a concern about having more applicants, I can do that.
I think, I think he's a good candidate, but I think just what transparency say, I mean, we should get it in the paper. I don't feel such a nice.
With the urgency of this, what we're doing is being long. It can well go on to the limit to what we have to, when, he's the only one. These coming recommended already, I just think more, like Mr. Smith said, for transparency, for time sake. We should just go right until we have to and see what comes in. That's my thing.
Cause I actually feel like he's a good candidate, but just to make sure if I have some fair accounts.
I, I have no problem either which way, council, you wanna go, we'll re-push it out if that's the case, if that's the motion is on forward for that, then we'll revisit next month. Just tell me which way you'd like me to go and I'll.
Making that motion?
Yes, I'm gonna motion, go get it in the paper.
To, motion to extend it to the next?
To this.
So you can.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we have a, a motion to extend this for one more month. Sorry?
I was just, she didn't hear it.
Oh, okay.
Do you have the table ladder yet? To the next meeting or?
You can table it, or we can just motion to extend it to the next council meeting, sufficient. I'll have it on the next meeting.
Can I ask Mr. Thompson a question?
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, would you please come to the podium?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, thank you for coming, you're already here, might as well ask some questions. I just kind of wanna get your idea on what you wanna do moving forward as representing the city of Dangerfield on the board.
Okay, um, as most of you know, if you saw my application in my resume, I've been involved in Dangerfield since I moved here in the eighties. I served on the council from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-four. Served in the fire department for thirty-one years. I've been involved in the city of Dangerfield in a leadership role and an active part since I've been here. It's time that we go back to the way it was back in the eighties and the nineties when Mr. Roy Nail was our water board representative. He was a director. He stood up for the city of Dangerfield, he made sure things were done for the betterment of the community. That's what my plan would be. I'm not a yes man. All of you that know me, I am not a yes man. I think the job of the representative for the city of Dangerfield is to represent the citizens of Dangerfield. Overseal the financials, direct the employees to do as they should so that the water district is stable financially sound. So that, that's all. A brief.
Yes, sir.
You know? I've been watching it since I was city manager. It's been a problem for several, several years. And it's been going in the wrong direction. Okay? Can one person change that? No. But not one person can help. Cause it's gonna take all the cities coming together to stand up. And making the director of the, over the board, I mean, over the water district to understand that he works for us, we don't work for him.
What do you think, like, right off the top of your head, comes to your mind, needs to change there?
Needs to change?
Yeah.
Well, first thing that needs to change is the directors need to direct. Okay? Now, other than that, now, I know something, you know, about their finances, but not enough to speak on that tonight. Okay? Um, they're pretty proud, it's hard to get information. So I was hoping that we would take that step, the city would, so I could actually attend in a capacity knowing that I would be there the next time to ask some blunt questions.
Uh, I have a question for you. We've come along for a long time and do know that you've been involved with the city.
I'm sorry, I'm coming for you because I am very hard.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I apologize. I'm saying, we know that you've been involved with the city since you've been here and you know it, a lot of people and things and I, I feel like you would be able to stand up and direct and work with the people. So I think you're a good candidate, we just kind of wanna satisfy your appetite by just having it open just one more time, but you are a person of choice.
And I would wonder, Ms. Maye was asked if she would like to serve.
Well, you know, my thing is that sometimes we want people to come and do something. But if it's out there and they see it, maybe she doesn't want to, you might think she's a good candidate, but she may not want to do that. You know?
Well, I can't address, I just know she was asked and, and she didn't comply at that time. I mean, I would, I would give her a call and see, I would, you know? I'm not opposed, I mean, I'll do the best I can for the city of Dangerfield. I may not be the perfect person, but there is no perfect person.
Right, none of us is perfect, but I feel like you probably would do an excellent job. But she has not shown any interest, I don't feel like we need to call her and ask her company an application. That's just the way I feel, you know, thick of that. But I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Oh, one more thing, sir, for you, now, you're not afraid to stand up to anyone, are you, if they oppose what you're doing? Are you, are you afraid to stand up for what you believe in? Okay, all right, cool. I thank you so much.
I will only stand up for what I believe in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me retract that. If y'all tell me I don't, as the city council, you have a final question.
Thank you.
And we can give them.
We appreciate your time.
So Mrs. Smith did, uh, put forth a motion to extend this one month. Uh, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Hood, a second. Do, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Okay, now we will deliberate and act to approve the Dangerfield Economic Development Corporation's request to use type B funds for the purchase and installation of four park benches in the city park.
This is on, so Dangerfield E C Met, they have been wanting to put more back into the community and one of the things they wanna do is help replace some of the benches that are deteriorating in the park. Uh, they have the funds to do that in the type B account, uh, they're just asking for council permission to do so. You can see the benches, page sixty-five, sixty-six.
These are typical power company?
Yes. They should last.
Benches are dedicated by?
A few of them.
Were you replacing those?
Oh, I'll replace the ones that are in the worst conditions. Address the dedicated ones. It's a simple matter, we'll just put some in. Know them, the placards and, and the work out and I do want that.
I think that's important.
Those, I did see the plan where that was done in the late nineties and there's a few that were bought from citizens that were not there. So those, those little metal placards, they're simple, so maybe we can read them out. We'll make sure that happens. They, they may need updated, I mean, they are from, I think ninety-eight is. Yes, we'll take care of that as well.
I make a motion to approve the economic development corporation's request to place the benches. Okay, Mr. Ramirez has made a motion, do we have a second?
I have seconded.
Mrs. Smith, a second. Do, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Now we will deliberate and act to approve the Dangerfield Economic Development Corporation's request to implement a mural program. Mural program is on pages sixty-seven to fifty-eight.
So this is, um, this is a business muriel program. Basically, it is a fifty-fifty grant match, cause all of the E C grants are fifty-fifty. And it would allow businesses a way to have, the goal is to get some downtown tourism, okay? And, and we wanna do that. We see a lot of places, I've been wanting to push this for quite a while. Muriels bring in people that wanna stop and take a picture, or maybe they'll go in and get a cup of coffee, and maybe they'll go to the park, and maybe they'll go to the shop down the road and buy something at the same time. And this is, by doing this program through the E C, we can help those businesses with grants to fund it. That's the purpose of the E C is economic development and tourism. This is a way to do that, council approves the program, and we can work with whatever is, is currently in the E C budget to do some grants and get some of that stuff going. We've already got one that, that will do one.
Mrs. Jones, where would it be located?
It's gonna be depend on the business, so it's a business muriel program and it's a private, so it, you know, if it's a local business downtown wants to come to us and say, hey, wanna do a muriel? Can we apply for this program? Then we, we apply for the program on the basis of this information right here.
So the business would pay for half?
The business would pay for half, decently. And it's a, um, it's designed for private commercial buildings, so it's not, it's not city buildings, I wouldn't need, you know, city buildings.
Do we have someone in mind that's gonna paint these?
Well, I, I do know a couple artists that do these, um, there's one that's done some work in our neighboring town, East Springs, she did some really wonderful work over there. She's pretty reasonable, I, I could only give recommendations, there're, there're businesses, it's their business and who they wanna contract with is just kind of, you know? By doing it this way, it does give us some say about what can go up, um, which, you know, keeping with appropriate, um, downtown. We don't wanna put something massively inappropriate on a wall. But this gives a little bit of control over that. Oh, there's so many. We got.
There's a lot of empty buildings there.
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds, you've got the, the new.
Coffee street that Robert needed around about.
The Chamber.
That whole.
God. You've got the new business that Stan built. They just painted it gray, but that's a whole nice little alley that could do with some rehack. Just a drawl. There's a lot of cities that do these kinds of programs, I've actually mimicked this off of, uh, another city that, that does a similar program.
Been nice to someone's. Not chuck wagons aboard.
No. Not chuck wagons aboard.
You said you had a candidate right now?
I make a motion to approve the Dangerfield Economic Development Corporation request to extend the program.
Okay, Mr. Hood has made a motion, we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Mrs. Smith, with a second, all in favor? None opposed? Now we will move on to our monthly departmental reports. Initial reports only, no action to be taken. First look to animal shelter, fire, library, municipal court, police, public works, monthly reports on pages sixty-nine to eighty.
Animal shelter down by Africa.
Those adoptions?
Yeah.
The adoption program? Well, community's trying to keep up with them.
Yes, they are. And it's getting warm, so we got all the dog calls now.
That blanket band, they're everybody locked up. Gotta catch it when the game's over.
Yes. They, they are supposed to be locked if there's no gangs.
How's, how's it all looking out there?
Our guys keep an eye on it. Pick up if needed.
Okay, if we don't have any questions on any of that, we're gonna move on to the financials. Mrs. Sanders will give us an update.
Um, we finished, uh, April and that's seven months into the budget. Um, seven months in, we should be tracking around fifty-eight point three one percent. And, uh, we're tracking at sixty-one point six two percent, so our revenues are actually up three point three one percent. Um, the expenditures, they should be tracking around fifty-eight point three one percent and they are tracking at forty-seven point one zero percent. So our expenses are eleven point two one percent lower. So that means we have more money coming in and going out, which is always good. Um, year-to-date, uh, our revenue is two million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, sixty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And the expenditures are two million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven and seventy-six cents. Um, that leaves us a difference in the positive of three hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety cents. Next month in June, we will be doing the budget workshop, so we'll be diving into, um, department budgets and capital investment budgets. Any more questions?
If we don't have any questions on financials, now we will have the city managers', uh, report on page five. Mrs. Jones?
Um, just to recap, April eighteenth, we did a community day at Irving Park, Urban Park. Uh, where we restored the park leechers, we did, it looks great out there, all of the city leechers have been redone. Uh, Home Depot, that was a Home Depot grant of that twelve thousand dollars, they all came out, I think we had all over forty, at least forty, fifty people there. Um, working on that day and it, and it was nice, so. That's why, uh, we do, we do wanna do that again next year in a different part of town, cause it's just a community initiative, but we're gonna try to do some, some, some cleanup around town. Um, hopefully that's the start of that. As you know, or can't remember, I've been pursuing my certified public manager certificate. Uh, I'm excited that I'm gonna be graduating with that on June ninth. One of only fourteen selected for that course. I started in December of twenty-three and the final requirement was to write a research paper, apply a research paper. I turned that in this week and I will be graduating June ninth. With that being said, if the graduation is in Round Rock, I would ask if the council allowed to move our June ninth meeting to the following Monday so that I may attend that graduation. I have put in a lot of hours and work to get that certification, it will be, I believe, one of the only that has had it for the city. It is, it's been a lot of work and I made a lot of contacts and I've learned a lot of things that will benefit the city or would like to attend if I'm able to, if not.
Would Jones sixteen have that for you, call us having a meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
It would, with, with that said, that will be our budget workshop as well. And that would also give us a little bit more time to get those papers together for you guys and all of the projects. We will do it like we did last year where we have the five o'clock budget workshop meeting and then the six o'clock standard.
Meeting.
Uh, unless you guys wanted to change it to a second meeting.
It's supposed to be sixteen.
But, uh, I didn't. And I asked early because I would like to post that to the public and we do change that meeting day, you know the last thing goes.
Do we need to, do we have a motion or something to change that day?
If you just let, you know that I can change it, I'll change it.
Okay.
Um, if there's, if there's an objection to that, we'll go forward with the ninth.
Or sixteen too.
Yeah. I don't think anyone opposes that.
We'll have to go with that, sixteen, sixteen. Jess, you're good?
I'm having good weather, anything or not? Yes.
Sixteen.
And I'll send a reminder, keep in mind that we will do budget workshop before and regular meeting at six. Which is how we did it last year, it worked well. Next up, they're convincing internal shifts within the police department code enforcement, we did a little bit of switching. Uh, Caitlin Flanche was our code enforcement, she's now gone to the police department side and Carrie Kirkland is gone to code enforcement. These are just, just a couple switches to, to make things flow a little better. I think Officer Kirkland, with her experience, is gonna be really well-suited to code enforcement. Um, she's very passionate about helping people, it's just the goal, it's not just about writing tickets, it's also to put those people together with resources. So she's gonna be taking over, uh, code enforcement and Officer Clutch went full-time with the police department, so just a little switch internally.
Is code our type?
Code is full-time, that's the department. Code is full time. Now that's the department that we created.
Has Officer Kirkland had the code enforcement?
She goes in August. But she's been doing code enforcement under the police department for years. So it's not new to her in a long time.
Okay, what?
Our, she's been with us for. She's it's just internal switch. It's not even a anything like that. Uh one last thing I do want to share is Amanda has attended and completed eight month long program uh for new and emerging finance directors. And just a little snippet from act uh act N T N C T cog. Uh I can't say it. It was an ac- application referral process where a selected a cohort of thirty individuals to stay, you know, the last eight months. Amanda attended at least six of the eight. Actually, did all eight. All eight of the sessions to learn various aspects of industry and take deep dives into critical issues of her job and responsibilities as a public finance official. Her classes were day long events presented by experts in the field facilitated by experienced professionals. This is just another uh feather in our cap. She's learning more about finance that benefits us in the long run and I'll continue to encourage that training and she goes after it on her own as well.
She has an Ezone, Mr. Farg.
Does it have what?
Mr. Farg ain't an Ezone.
Um it's not clicking. Well, it's.
Prayers.
Right. Are needed. I will give you a prayer.
Okay, we have any questions for Mrs. Jones? If not, uh the monthly boards and commission minutes on page page eighty-eight. One wants to review those. If there's no questions on those, then uh I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion for adjournment.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Do we have a second? Mr. Ramirez is second. All in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Thank you all for coming out. The time is seven twenty-five.